Posted in prominent public view at the location of the meeting. Witness my hand is 8th day of January 2019.
Review the consent agenda. First one, 3.1 addition of items of new business.
There are none. I'm sorry.
3.2 minutes of the December 3rd 2018 regular meeting.
I did not see any errors or any corrections that we made.
3.3 approval of the finance report. Okay, and start with 3.4 approval of the activity fund report. 3.5 approval of activity fundraisers. 3.6 approval of the child nutrition report.
If you go back and look at 3.3 finance report, there is a report from David Manning on our investments, and all our investments are current and up to date. I have also attached the finance report that I showed you last month, and that gives you kind of a breakdown of our expenditures and where we're at year-to-date as compared to 2017. Just a couple of things that I thought I might point out to you with regard to some of those. If you look at numbers 000 and 299, that's our payroll, and you can see that there's an increase in that payroll from last year, the same time to this year, and that's a result of the stipends in December. Okay? And if you look down at 420, 420 is cleaning services, and what we've done is we've tried to increase... Actually, that's from our spraying for all of our sites, the DT spraying. So we've done some more spraying this year than we have previously in the past. And then 618, you can see the year-to-date increase there also. We've ordered more of our cleaning supplies in bulk, so we just ordered a big second semester cleaning supply shipment that we received. So that's why you see the increase there with those three. So those are just a few of the changes that you'll notice from last month's report. If you look at 3.4, the activity fund report, activity funds are all in good standing. We continue to get fundraiser requests in. Thank Mrs. Durkey for the job that she does getting all of those fundraiser reports in, our administrators and sponsors. If you look at 3.5, there is a fundraiser to approve. That is for the Science Club. And what happened is the Science Club was a new club. They worked the concession stand, so when we distribute that money amongst those organizations, we need to approve that so that they can be part of that distribution. And then they'll be sure and get that in at the beginning of the summer for next year. The second attachment is kind of what we've talked about, a breakdown of all the FY19 fundraisers. And again, Mrs. Durkey has done a fantastic job itemizing those, where you're able to look at those. And if you look at the yellow highlighted, that is completed, and that gray color, those are completed, but they haven't turned in their total receipts yet. So she's still gathering that money and gathering that information. So as you can see there, we have FY17, 18, and 19, and that covers a few pages. And that's what we're kind of looking at to see what are some ways we can help our programs out and reduce some of those fundraisers. And then lastly, 3.6, the child nutrition fund. I thank Mrs. Eccles again for, she's walking me through this each month and does a great job of helping me with that. Year-to-date, we've served more lunch and breakfast to students. We are down a little bit on all the cart sales and not really sure why that is, so we'll kind of continue to monitor that at our high school and middle school as to why all the cart sales are lower. And then you can see because of our days served, we're a little bit down in the month of November. Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda?
I would make the motion that we approve 3.1 through 3.6 as presented.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Should I set 3.7? Wait a minute. Did I leave one out? I'm looking at my...
3.6 is...
Okay, 3.6 was the... Okay, we're good. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't want to neglect something. I apologize for the interruption.
Go to approve purchase order conferences for the following funds for fiscal year 19. 4.1 general fund.
I believe so.
Purchase orders 520 through 553 totaling $54,930.50 with change orders 01 through 553 and payroll purchase order number 50238 totaling $85,67 with change orders $50,000 through $50,238 for year-to-date total of $11,170,020.15.
I'm going to do the other two also, then I'll go back.
4.2 building fund, number 21, purchase orders 47 through 48 totaling $10,800 with change orders 1 through 48 for year-to-date total of $170,638.86. 4.3 child nutrition fund, number 22, purchase orders 1 through 31 totaling $200 with change orders 1 through 31 and payroll change orders $50,000 through $50,004 for year-to-date total of $367,956.61. And 4.4 gift fund, number 81, change orders 1 through 7 for year-to-date total of $37,000.
If we look back at 4.1, highlight a few of the major expenses that you might see. Number 523 is $9,636.42. That is Tree Solutions. I mentioned a minute ago that we've ordered some bulk cleaning supplies, and that is that bulk... That is one of those bulk orders. And if you look at 524, we also fulfilled some of those supplies through Jecans and Price, so we quoted those out through two different companies. Number 526, $1,170.24. Those are headphones for Chromebooks at Longfellow. Number 528, $1,188. Metadot is an inventory system that Caitlin designed that's piloting at the middle school to help us kind of get a better idea of what technology we do have. We found through our strategic planning, when we were gathering up the data and looking at what do we have, we didn't have a real good process to inventory those things. So Caitlin has done an excellent job, and she's kind of working her way through this. 529, that is a ticket system for IT repair. That's kind of something else that also came up in our strategic planning is that formal process for ticketing and getting those repairs done for technology. And again, Caitlin has taken it upon herself and found this Mojo Help Desk, and they are piloting that at the middle school. Number 535, those are Apple MacBooks, $16,000. That is to be used for Mr. Brodt's debate teams. When they are going to a debate competition, they cannot have Wi-Fi, so everything has to be saved on a flash drive, and our Chromebooks don't have that capacity, so we have ordered those MacBooks for his speech team, and he does a fantastic job with them. If you ever get a chance to go watch him, those kids are fantastic. Mr. Brodt's been fantastic. Number 537, ice machine. We looked at repairing that, but ended up needing a replace if the repair was going to be more expensive than a replacement. Number 540, $1,040, that is for Duke TIP. That's one of the registrations that we pay for students to be able to participate in or have the opportunity to participate in a gifted and talented program. And they do that on their own and register through that, and then the school pays that registration. Number 542 was to repair some tires on an activity bus. That was $1,297. $544,000 Elaine Hutchison. We had Elaine Hutchison. She is a former state teacher of the year from Fairview, CA, and spoke to our high school teachers last week on Google Drive, using Google Sheets and Slides and forms. We've heard great feedback from our teachers that they learned some things that they can apply to their classrooms, so that was the payment for Elaine. Number 546, that's some repairs by Northwest Electric to the Ag Farm for $2,000. $550 is $3,000 for some supplies for professional development. And 552 was books for professional development. And what 550 and 552, we had Dr. Warwiffel come in and work with our pre-K through 8th grade teachers on behavior management plans, procedures, and then positive reinforcement, and what are incentives and what are ways to motivate students. And those purchase orders helped purchase some of the supplies for those. And I can tell you again, it was a fantastic... Heard lots of great feedback in a fantastic two days of professional development. Look at 4.2, the building fund. In 4.2, I believe that the only purchase order there is an open purchase order for district repairs of Fair Plumbing, and actually, there is one for Gray Dog Mechanical too for some heater repair at the high school. I believe it was on the math meeting where that took place. 4.3, the child nutrition fund. The only thing there, they had to have some work completed by Kelly Schlar on their garbage disposal there at the middle school. And in our gift fund, there's nothing to report. Are there any questions about our general fund, building fund, or child nutrition?
I'm assuming we'll get a report maybe from these wonderful people sitting behind me, but both professional days last week were productive and positive and...
Very, very good days. I can tell you that we heard great feedback from our teachers. Got a couple of teachers come and tell me this was one of the best professional developments they've had. We've been able to, and I know that Mrs. Williams and Ms. Martini, they've started applying some of those things that we've learned already with some motivation and incentives. I think Lincoln had a Carnival Cruise where they took students around to different common area settings and taught them some procedures and reinforcements. It was a great two days, really was.
Always refreshing to hear, because meetings are meetings, and no one likes them, but it's refreshing that you're bringing in some new and exciting stuff that they can apply pretty quick.
Credit to Dr. Riffle.
Sometimes, you know, you gotta wait till August, you go, what am I learning about this in January? So applaud that. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I would make that motion to accept. Sorry, I was too busy listening to myself talk. Where are we? 4.1 through 4.4 as presented.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Superintendent's report?
Okay. Just wanted to give you an update on strategic planning. We've had two phases completed of strategic planning. It has been two worthwhile, or four worthwhile days that we've been able to work with community leaders, administrators, and teachers. Our next phase three planning session will be January 28th and 29th, and we look forward to that. We have set some goals for the district, and those are available online on the website. Pam's done a very good job of getting that updated, and I'm encouraging you to go look at those. There are also the results of the survey that talk about what our community's values and beliefs are, and I encourage you to take a look at those. It's been a really good process. Look forward to continuing that process in a couple of weeks. We've already been able to look at some things and make some improvements as we've been working our way through it that we see we need to be doing a better job at. I also want to recognize you all as a school board. This is School Board Recognition Month, and thank you for your service to this district and the students in this district. Obviously, a volunteer board, the time and effort that you put in is very much appreciated, and we thank you for that. And in recognition of that, we have certificates that the School Association has presented to you guys. And just want to again thank you for your time, your effort, and your dedication to our students and to our community. Mrs. Kane? And Coach Parker? So thank you all very much. Thank you. And that is all that I have for Superintendent's report.
I have to tell you, I was, you know, trying to prepare for the, for our meeting and everything before Christmas, and then like Mr. Argos said, after we went to our professional development, I just kind of scrapped everything. I'm like, whoa, start it over. That's right, something new. So I'm going to hand these out, and I'm just going to talk to you a little bit about what's going on for the middle school now. You know, I don't know where to stand.
Right here, it's fine.
Or can I sit?
Yes, you can.
How about if I stand right here? Does that work?
Yep.
We're really trying to focus on our environment, and that's something that Dr. Riffel talked to us a lot about. And, you know, we're taking... PBIS is our Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. And so we're trying to figure out the best way that we can establish a culture of inclusion and respect and, you know, try to have the best interactions that we can with our students and the community. And so by doing this, we want to figure out a way to come up with a set of expectations. And you can see our full sheet here. Our little expectations for the middle school is we want kids to show up. Okay? We want them to show respect, show up ready to work, show self-control, and show responsibility. So I presented this to all the kids. They all seemed pretty excited about it, you know, coming together and having something that they're going to work towards. So what we are doing is we came up... The teachers also came up with this rubric, and the students haven't necessarily seen this rubric yet. We'll be making posters on this rubric. But the cool thing that our teachers are doing right now is we kind of assigned each group of teachers a different area, so they're going through, and we're making videos of kind of what you should do and what you shouldn't do in certain areas. So like today, there was a bathroom video. Did you both see the... You didn't see the bathroom video? Depending on what... Well, you should have seen the bathroom video. I'm sure it will be shown tomorrow. But during their fifth hour class, we're taking a little bit of time, and Mr. Wooton made a video, sang a song about the way that you should act in the bathroom. So it was fabulous. And we're doing all the areas, you know, how you should act, things you should do in the locker room, and things you shouldn't do, and things like that. I was part of a video on Friday and how you should exit the classroom and, you know, walk in the hallways and things like that. So I think that showing the kids, and the teachers are the actors in it, so I think that they will hopefully appreciate that. But one cool thing that we are doing is we are handing out, if you see the little green things, we're going with the show theme, and those are our show passes. And so the starring area is where we write the student's name in, and it's kind of like gotchas. Oh, we caught you doing something good. We caught you picking up trash. We saw that you helped your, you know, your fellow student carries books to class. So we want to reward those positive behaviors and hoping that that will help transform our school. So as we do that, each kid... How many tickets can you get? As many as you deserve. That's right. And that's kind of one thing that we're trying to focus on. We want, you know, as many positive things as we can. We have a big hopper that we've put in the office, and whenever you get a ticket, you know, the teacher, not just teacher, teacher, staff, anybody who sees good behavior. We want to include everybody and have everybody have a chance to hand these out. When you see the good behavior, then you give it to the student. The students get to go put it in the hopper, and then we're doing a drawing. So every Wednesday, we will draw names out based on the percentage of kids who have their names in it. We're keeping track of whose names are in it. And then they get some kind of positive reinforcement. So that's... We've come up with things that we won't tell the kids until the first day. Every week, it's going to be something different, but it's not going to be gum or candy. It's going to be a privilege or a freedom, some kind of opportunity, or possibly an exemption. I did give the example of, you know, you may get to redo an assignment or something like that. It could be an assignment pass if you, you know, did poorly on assignment. You might get a second chance, something like that. But we're hoping that, you know, together, we're trying to change the tone in the classrooms, you know, establish better respect both ways. We want to make sure that our teachers are engaging our students in the curriculum, and by doing that, hopefully, we can manage some behavior and, you know, have kind of a positive experience. So this is kind of what we're piloting. We just, I mean, we learned about this Thursday, Friday. We turn around and we started it Monday morning. My teachers are super excited about this, so we're, I think that it's... I mean, would you agree? They've kind of all bought in and everybody's...
Everyone has bought in, and everyone saw that it takes all of us. It takes the village out of the same cause, but yes, it's exciting how everyone has taken an active role in working with it.
It is. One of the things that we're learning is to try to address students in a different way. Instead of saying, you know, don't do this, don't do that, you know, try to twist it and do a positive approach to it. It's funny, I had a teacher come up to me and say, oh my gosh, being so positive, that's kind of hard. And I'm like, yes, it is hard, you know, but, I mean, that's kind of what we're looking for. And, you know, in doing things for the students, I would like to say, I think that we've been doing great things all along. You know, we offer remediation for students. We have after-school tutoring for students. We, you know, a lot of people think of the sports side of it, but we have so many other activities at the middle school, you know, they can be in TSA and FCC LA, QuizBowl, Scholastic Team. So there's a lot of different things that we can do to encourage them to be participating and, you know, to work on their grades, keep their grades up. You know, we want to maintain healthy relationships from, you know, the cross between students and peers and the school and the community, and that's where Mrs. Phillips comes in. And Ms. Nora Scarborough and Ethan Ruler here, and they're going to talk a little bit about how we're working on those relationships.
Well, thank you for having us this evening. When Ms. Martini came up and asked me this summer, or I guess it was probably late last spring, we talked about, I told her I was wanting to do more in a different direction besides what I'm getting to do in the classroom, and we came up with the leadership class. And so through this summer, we talked several times, and the Goldberg Leadership of Oklahoma basically came to be. And we received a grant through Lead Oklahoma. It's offered through the higher regions of education. And Oklahoma Teacher Connection is where the grant basically comes from. And our class started out with, I think, 22, and I noticed that we started back to school on Monday, and we now, we are up to 24. The grant allows for 10 to 25, so I think we're well within the parameter. The more the merrier, yet this is where we can draw the line on that. And it's important to our students to feel valued, but also to recognize how to value other people. And we have been working very hard with the school, hand-in-hand with Mrs. Martini, with the staff, and have been able to do a lot of things just within our school to help our students have pride in where we are. There's a lot of things I wrote down here. Mrs. Martini did a good job of mentioning the things that our class is all about. We are, we work with the Chamber of Commerce. We'd like to see a big working relationship between the city of Alvin and through the public schools. And sometimes middle school kids, sometimes people have the perception, oh my gosh, they're in middle school. Well, yes, they are. They've worked very hard to get there, and they're going on from there. And the Leadership Oklahoma plays a valued part, and we will be able to take a field trip to Oklahoma. We're planning on going to Oklahoma City. We are planning on going to Northwestern to visit with Dr. Jen Lee. The Oklahoma Teacher Connection, this grant is basically talking about trying to get more teachers within the state of Oklahoma, or them to consider that as one of their roles. And we had on November 6th, pretty proud, it was pretty amazing. We have 64 students, and I think 62 were in attendance that day. We had 62 people from careers all over Northwest Oklahoma that came and sat with them in a one-on-one situation and talked to them about their careers. And I'm not going to take any more away from what they have, they would like to talk to you about. I'm the teacher, but they are what makes it happen, and I'm going to let them take it from here. So, thank you.
So like she said, my name is Nora Scarborough, and I'm going to tell you about a few things that we've been doing for our Goldberg Lead Oklahoma. So one of our main things that we've been doing is to, it's called Little Buddies, and it's where we sort of adopted a first-grade classroom, and we go and do activities and teach them about the true colors of Alvin Middle School. So so far, we have taught them about responsibility, caring, and kindness. Another thing we have done is helping our custodian, Ms. Carol, and we have picked up trash for the teachers' rooms, wiped down desks, and vacuumed their rooms. And we have also organized a work schedule for the Alvin Middle School concession stand during basketball games, and we have also worked the gate for them. And we have also coordinated and set up a dance with MCC LA.
Hey, my name is Ethan Ruler. I'm going to tell you some of our stuff that we have done. We helped Alex Mantas with setting up for the Halloween party down at Square. We set up tables and chairs, and we helped organize the groups, all the group costumes. And then we have worked the, during the basketball games, we would go around and take the trash out of the concessions. And for Christmas, we will help set up for the Christmas trees by decorating the trees. And then we have... We will be doing a Valentine's Veterans, so it's where we send veterans in Wichita Valentine's cards. And that's what we have used our grant for. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
What's the best part of all the stuff you've done? I mean, what makes you just feel good?
That whenever we have group projects, everyone actually works together, because in other classes sometimes people won't, but in this, everyone has worked together efficiently.
Have you seen other students that aren't in your class see you do these positive things, and have you seen an effect on them?
Yes, sir. We have built, or kind of made up a system for the chairs in the cafeteria, and we have seen people helping pick up chairs after lunch whenever others holding them behind.
Leave my example.
Good job, Cass. Thank you, Ms. Martini and Ms. Phillips.
Is that it? My school reports?
Yes, ma'am.
Items of current business. Discussion with possible board action, go to approve the school calendar for 2019-2020 school year.
Okay. If you will look at the calendar, I'm going to start by thanking some people that were a big part of this. One of the things we did this year is we formed a committee back in December, November. Gosh. And we met a couple of times, and we talked about, you know, what are dates we want to start? What are dates we want to finish? You know, when is, what about Thanksgiving? What about Christmas break? So I want to thank these teachers, Teresa Reeder, Sherry Benson, Rachel Cunningham, Kelly Woods, and Dana Manning, and the parents, Jen Oswald, Brooke Pingleton, Terry Leeper, Terry Walcott, and Lisa Parker. They were able to give me a lot of valuable feedback and really great conversation that we had together as a group about all of the details that go into a school calendar. And it's more than just picking dates. It's looking at events, at banquet's, at family time, at holidays. And so very appreciative of the feedback that they were able to give me. This calendar will meet the requirements of our teacher negotiated contract of 180 days. It will have 172 instructional days, and it will meet the 1080 minimum hour requirement for students. So if there are no questions, I would recommend that we approve the 19-20 school calendar.
Have the teachers looked at this calendar?
Okay, yes. So what we did is from all of the suggestions from this committee, we proposed three separate calendars. And we had teachers and staff, all employees vote for the calendar that they felt was best for them and their family. And this proposed calendar was the winner by a wide margin.
Is this, and I just because I don't know, is this the first time we've kind of done this, where you've involved this as far as a parenting group? I mean, all kinds of events before.
Yes.
I know that there's a lot of thought that goes into it, but sometimes it's an administrative thing, and I just wondered if that was...
Yes. This is the first time I'm aware of, and I want to thank administrators too, because I would get suggestions. They provided great suggestions also. But yes, we tried to make this as collaborative as we can make it to fit everybody. And to tell you from that also, we've talked about as a committee, we want to get together this spring, and let's start looking at... this spring, and let's start looking at the next one.
Didn't work, yeah.
So that we can get some consistency for our community, and they're able to plan their summers, their holidays, and those things.
Thank you. Well, thank you for doing that. I would make the motion that we accept the calendar as presented to us.
A second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Harper? Yes.
Seven point two, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the request for release of a bus to the First Baptist Church, January nineteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, to travel to Falls Creek at Davis. First Baptist Church will provide licensed certified bus driver, fuel, and certificate of insurance.
This is something that we've done previously for organizations, as long as they meet the requirements of the certification for bus driver and insurance and fuel. We also check Mr. Ellis' course and make sure that it doesn't interfere with any of our student activities, and we do have a bus available to them. So if I have any questions, I would recommend that we approve this transportation request. Make the motion, we approve seven point two. Second.
Kane?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
I propose executive session to conduct ongoing evaluation of the superintendent for twenty-five OS Section three oh seven B one. Vote to convene an executive session.
Make the motion, we go to executive session.
I'll second.
Harper?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
We're a cool board, Mike.
Well, thank you.